Really?
Yes, that's what he has to do.
Okay, well.
So.
And we can hire a surveyor if you want to.
Well, actually.
I mean, we have a document.
We do. The sale of the document, if I'm reading it right.
Sale of property document.
Yes. Okay, I have this here. This is what this needs, isn't it? I'm thinking it says, yeah. Let's say it isn't.
Twenty-five foot access easement.
Hey, Dan.
It's recent. Oops.
Recently acquired. Here's the document.
Is what we saw in them?
Yes. And then it's A and B.
Mm-hmm.
The plan map might show.
Where is that? It's right at Annie Glidden and South Valta on the northwest.
Are you guys ready or?
Okay.
Okay. Anyone get started without me? And Katerina should be coming, so. I adjourn the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for July 5th, 2017. Roll call, please.
Barbie? Buckley? Castro?
Here.
Crowe? Neer?
Yes.
Wright?
Here.
Chair Atherton?
Here.
Quorum's present.
Approval of the agenda, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? If none, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Wright?
Second.
Second by Castro, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This is the public participation portion of our meeting for anyone that has anything that is not on the agenda. If there's anyone of the public that would like to speak, you're welcome to go to the podium. There being none, we'll move on to the approval of the June 7th, 2017 minutes. Any changes, corrections, deletions, additions? There being none, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Wright?
Second.
Second by Castro, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. We begin with old business. We continue the public hearing on a petition by Catamount Brewing Company Incorporated, represented by Andrew Nordman, for approval of a text amendment to the following articles of Chapter 23 Unified Development Ordinance of the Municipal Code, Article 3 Definitions, to add the use and a definition for micro-distillery. Article 5 Zoning District Regulations, to add micro-distillery as a permitted use in the G.C., General Commercial District, and the C.B.D., Central Business District. Article 12 Off-Street Parking, Loading, and Storage Requirements, by establishing a minimum parking requirement for micro-distillery. I open the floor to the city.
Thank you, Chair and Commission. What you have tonight in front of you is a text amendment. It was continued at the last meeting due to the applicant did not have a complete application. Everything's been completed and ready for the consideration by the Commission. The applicant, Catamount Brewing Company, is proposing to relocate from Genoa to the lower level of the house at 263 East Lincoln Highway. The building's located in the Central Business District, and we don't have, or don't have even in the UDO, micro-brewery or micro-distillery use or definition. So, the applicant's a petitioner for the text amendment, although we did work with the applicant to come up with language to kind of accommodate that particular use and where to locate it in the UDO, because we are affecting the, you know, all those districts' parcels, so not just one property. So I'll kind of go through this first, and then we're going to have the applicant, Andrew Nordman, get up and go through kind of his operation, what he's proposing. And then there's a sample motion at the end. The operation, again, they're going at the lower level of the house. They're going to have access off of North Third Street, which goes in the lower level. And the applicant indicated they're going to produce about 6,000 gallons of craft beer per year, be comprised of a tasting room, food sales, and retail sales of the beer produced on the site. We looked at some other ordinances in terms of definitions, and we wanted to be more general, so we came up with a definition for micro-distillery that will cover the micro-brewery, but also would cover the production of any other alcoholic beverages. So the definition, I'll go through it. It's a facility that produces alcoholic beverages onsite in quantities not to exceed 20,000 gallons per year, includes an accessory tasting room and retail sales area, indoor restaurant. A tasting room allows customers to taste samples of products manufactured onsite and purchase related sales items. Sales of alcoholic beverages manufactured outside the facility are prohibited. And we're proposing that the micro-distillery be a permitted use in the general commercial and also the Central Business District where the applicant's proposing to go. So for, then we thought of larger facilities, over 20,000 gallons per year production, come up with the use of distillery. Same definition, just larger, anything over 20,000 gallons per year. In terms of what districts to locate it, we suggest it'd be a special use, since they're a larger facility, special use in the general commercial, and then also in the light industrial and then heavy industrial districts. Those are larger parcels which may need to be used to accommodate such a site. Looked at the parking, too, and we use the restaurant formula for both the uses proposed, which is one space for every three seats plus one space for every employee on the maximum shift, is what is proposed. Citizen response forms, we did get two from two residents in the city in their support of the proposal, and those are in your packet. And I know we did get one additional email, I think it was handed out tonight. That individual was actually submitted a citizen response form, so they're just reemphasizing their support for the project. So our recommendation is to approve. There's a sample motion doing that, spelled out on Exhibit A, which is all the amendments, which I just went through. So we'll have the applicant, Andrew Nordman, kind of go up and present kind of their operation, what they plan to do over there, and then open it up for any questions or any public feedback.
If you could state your name and address, please?
Certainly. Maybe. Can you hear me? My name is Andrew Nordman. My address is 208 Alfred Drive in Sycamore. And I am the owner, brewer, janitor, mechanic, and general doer of all things at Catamount Brewing Company. And I hope that our location will soon be sitting in downtown DeKalb. The operation that I'm planning to move over is a continuation of operations from my Genoa location wherein we produce small-scale batches, sitting in the neighborhood of 93 gallons per batch, for consumption on-premise in the form of four-ounce samples or 16-ounce pints, with an additional component of to-go sales in both bottles and cans. We would only be selling what we have, what we produce on the premises, as we have been continuing to do in Genoa with success, as well as minor distribution to bars and liquor stores throughout the area. That's a smaller percentage of our total sales. The larger portion is through our tasting room, taproom, and essentially a bottle shop for what we produce. Yeah, that's essentially it. I welcome any questions, and I really hope that we move forward from here.
Thank you. We have a public portion that will seek if there's any input by the crowd that's here tonight.
Sure.
Just joking. And then if we have any questions, then we'll have you come up and answer.
Okay, certainly.
Thank you. So I do open this up to any public comments or questions. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to ask anything, you're welcome to go to the podium, or state anything. And I give it one more time. And I will close the public portion of this part and open it up to any commissioners for questions or comments.
I can go. I have more than anything else, questions that are more my curiosity more than anything else. So you mentioned that you have an operation now in Genoa that where you produce 93 gallons per batch.
Yes, if you want to go back to the podium.
Is that, did I understand that correctly?
No, we had an operation that consisted of a much larger system. However, our system is going to be downscaled due to the physical limitations of the ceilings in the House Cafe, so we'll be going from a 250-gallon system down to a 90-gallon system.
So the move is towards a lower-capacity operation?
A lower-capacity per batch, not necessarily a lower capacity overall. What we're going to be doing is having more fermenters for larger variety while having a smaller total volume per batch. So instead of me having the opportunity of making 2,000 gallons at any given time, I have the ability to make only 200 gallons, 250 gallons at any given time, but spread across six different products. So you've got more availability and more selection, as opposed to only brewing on a particular thing.
Makes sense. So am I understanding this correctly? This is a move, it's not necessarily an expansion in terms of?
This is a move, yes.
This is a move on your part. Makes sense. I guess I, more than anything else, I have a general question for city staff. I read this, it looks fine to me. I realize that there is an alcohol operation, alcohol production of an alcohol liquid in this case, but is it fair to say that this, I mean, it looks like a subdivision within the restaurant category. Am I, aside from the liquid production, is that a fair statement? Am I missing something here?
I think usually the restaurant's more, probably going to be more accessory to the operation like this or others. I mean, the main thing is the production of the brewer. In the restaurant, the food part's probably just accessory to it. Probably in Andrew's case, it's probably that way. We're using the parking formula from that, employee, and based on number of seats, so it kind of depends on the operation, but restaurants more in conjunction with or more accessory type to it, I would say. There could be some operations where the restaurant is the main part and the micro-brewery is more of an accessory type to it.
I understand and appreciate the distinction between a micro-brewery and a distillery by the production capacity on an annual basis, and that sounds fair to me. Is there any other, and that's the line that we are drawing, are there any other regulations at state level for distilleries, micro-breweries that we can comment on?
Maybe Andrew can, since he's operating one, he can maybe, I know there's license requirements. In terms of a zoning standpoint, there's no, you know, we've kind of come up with that ourselves.
And as I mentioned, this is a curiosity of mine. I understand if there are regulations, is out of our scope here, so.
From a zoning perspective, there is nothing that I've seen at the state level regarding the manufacturing side, simply on the operational standpoint and the taxation standpoint, far less than a zoning opportunity. As far as the state's concerned, zoning, they don't care so much with the liquor manufacturing, defer to the municipalities.
And the city did a few months ago amend our liquor code to accommodate such type of use, a few months ago, I think. We did amend that for the forge that was planning to come near downtown to do some production, not so much the sales at this time, the tasting.
Makes sense. Thanks.
Chair.
I was trying to understand the parking requirements. Can you explain?
Yeah, the parking requirement, we use the same formula as for restaurants, so it's one space for every three seats. I'm not sure how many seats Andrew's going to have there.
Thirty.
Thirty. And then one space for every employee on the maximum shift. So this is in the downtown district, and does it require parking, off-street parking, for any use in the downtown district? So they'll have to use, you know, public parking facilities, but if it was in the G.C. or the other districts, they have to provide off-street parking, parking lot, basically.
What went into your decision to choose downtown DeKalb?
Variety of factors. One was that the House Cafe approached me about this opportunity around the time that I was exploring opportunities for other locations. This originally turned into, started out as, hey, a potential expansion opportunity, and then upon looking further at the opportunity, we said, well, perhaps this is be better suited to a move, and then if we expand, then we'd expand into something like a larger distillery operation still within the area. It had always been, even before I had opened up several years ago, my desire to be in the DeKalb area in the first place. But I just didn't quite feel that we had the brand recognition, and the timing was right to be able to be in that position. So an opportunity now to be able to set up some roots in DeKalb would be great.
Thank you.
Are you operating independently from the House Cafe?
Yes. Yes, we are our own entity with our own independent liquor licenses and regulations, both at the federal, state level.
Yeah, I was wondering about the tasting room, like, what's the setup? I've been in the house like ages ago, but where is this all going to happen?
Lower level of, yes, so there is an entrance on Third Street. You go down a set of stairs.
You go downstairs, so it's basically a cellar.
Yes, only it's a 2,000-square-foot cellar, so it's a pretty substantive space, wherein we have the, we're transplanting our bar from our Genoa location. It'll be 30 seats with 12 of our beers and two of our craft sodas on tap at all times for sampling as well as to-go sales.
So you can't go through the house to get to your place?
Technically, you can, but we have a separate door. There's a back stairway that will get to our front door, but you cannot enter the, our location without crossing the, you cannot enter from the House Cafe into our area without crossing a threshold with locked doors. So we're independent in timing, in both hours of operation and populace. They can't go freely.
So they can't go from your place into the house and?
They, it is physically possible, but it is not a requirement, and we're kind of shying that bit away.
Because does the house doesn't have a liquor license, or?
It does.
Does?
Yes. But there's a clear delineation on where their liquor licenses and where ours would start. And we've been making it clear throughout this process that no one can get a drink upstairs and then come down into my space and vice versa. They're independent spaces, and you're going out into the public to cross those thresholds, so.
How are you going to police that?
The same way that I have to police over-drinking and underage people, vigilance and procedure.
Okay.
I guess I have another question.
Go ahead.
So I realize and I'm fully aware of the fact that this is a motion for modification of the UDO, but when he starts moving, is this going to come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, or?
No, this is a men's ordinance, so when he does locate in there.
So that, this allows him to move in there, but he needs to install some equipment?
Yeah, he needs to get a, he's been working, get a, you know, building permit, occupancy permit, liquor license, all that stuff.
So that, the part about him moving and making all those changes doesn't have to come here?
Right, correct. It'll be a permitted use, you know, just have to meet the building code, liquor code, other requirements.
I mean, this is a pilot plan operation kind of thing. So I'm a campus, I know what distillation is, so, I mean, this is significant, so, very good. All right, thank you.
I think we're done?
All right, thank you.
Unless anyone has anything else? Nope, okay. I do have a quick question for the city, though. So back, I can't even remember how many years ago, there was a micro-brewery in what is now Deputans, were Deputances, on Third Street? So at that time, there was nothing in any of the ordinances or anything? I'm assuming, given that it's here, or was it in there and came out at some, like, how were they able to operate without the UDO in this form that we're working on now? Or was there some other type of? This is a curious question.
I'm not sure, it may have been called the restaurant, kind of included in that, or, but as far as I know, we've not had micro-brewery or distillery in our UDO. Imagine if it was ever added, it was not taken out, but it's probably classified a different use or under restaurant, perhaps.
Probably a restaurant.
Okay. They did serve a good amount of food.
Yeah.
It was.
The micro-brewery's more of an accessory part of it, perhaps, and.
Okay. I was curious as I was reading through all this and thought.
Good question, I remember that place, yeah.
How did that, yeah, okay, okay. So if there's no other questions or comments, I'd be happy to take a motion. Whoever's ready?
I will attempt to do a, to move, and I will use the sample motion. So I moved, I'm sorry, based on the submitted petition and testimony presented, I moved that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the city council approval of text amendments to the following articles of Chapter 23 Unified Development Ordinance of the Municipal Code, Article 3 Definitions, Article 5 Zoning District Regulations, Article 12 Off-Street Parking, Loading, and Storage Requirements, as indicated on the attached Exhibit A.
So we have a motion by Castro?
I'll second.
Second by Neer, any discussion? There being none, I'll take a roll call.
Barbie?
Yes.
Buckley? Castro?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Chair Atherton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So we move to new business, a public hearing on a petition by Marika Van Nustat for a variance to Articles 703 of the Unified Development Ordinance to allow for an uncovered front porch in the front yard, and a variance to Article 5.02.04 to reduce the front yard setback from 25 feet to 15 feet for the property located at 422 Regal Drive. And I open to the city?
We'll have the applicant make the initial presentation.
Hi, my name is Marika Van Nustat. I live at 422 Regal Drive and have since I purchased the home in 2006. And the home is, it's a corner lot, and what I would think you would assume is the front of the house faces Joanne, and the end of the house with the peak of the roof faces Regal. But the post office put the address on Regal. So that's the front of the house, and when I give the address to like delivery people, et cetera, I give them Regal, but there's no door on that side of the house. And there hasn't been a door there the whole time I've lived there. So finally, I was having some siding replaced on that side of the house, and I discovered that all of the foundation wood and a lot of the window wood around the frames and everything was all completely rotted, and I had mice in the wall. So I had to have Weaver Construction come in and replace the side of the house, most of the wood on the side of the house. So I thought, well, you know what? Since you're doing that, let's put a door on the side of the house that has the address, so I'll have a front door, which I have never had. And then he put in the door, replaced the two windows in the living room, so the door now goes right into the living space with the kitchen right off of it. And I thought, I don't really have a place to like go out on the deck and like have an outdoor meal, sit down at a table, put a table and chairs. Several of my neighbors up and down Regal have outdoor decks with tables and chairs, and I thought it would be really nice. So I talked to Weaver Construction, and I said, you know, can we put a deck here? My front edge is about 100 feet, which is about double what most of my neighbors is because I'm on the end of the block, so I'm looking for a deck that's like one-fifth of that length, 20-foot length, and to come out 10-foot from the house, so I would have a nice little porch off the front door, two steps up to the door, and a little deck running to the back of the house. It's a little bit big in the picture because I made that picture freehand, and I didn't really measure it to scale, to show my neighbors so that they could all say yea or nay if they, if they were okay with me doing it. So I think Dan adjusted the picture for you to scale. So I did, my Weaver Construction went for the permit, and I paid my handyman to take out the lawn, remove the lawn, because the deck would need to be over dirt and not grass. And then we found out that, then I found out that we needed to put a roof over it if we were going to do that, and I was barely, I'm barely going to be able to ford the porch. And there's just no way I could put a, plus, the roof is like this, and to come out like this would like interfere with the roofline, and it would just look really weird, which would not look right. And the, my neighbors, four of my neighbors have porches, and none of them have roofs. So that's when I said, when I approached the city about getting a variance to the code.
Okay. Thank you. If we have any questions, we'll have you come back up. Thanks.
Okay, you have the staff report in your packet. The specific amendments, or variants to the UDO as indicated in the staff report, the, in the, I guess, accessory regulations in the UDO, it talks about the allowed encroachments into the side yard, front yard, rear yard. What the applicant's proposing, we've indicated is an uncovered porch, or I guess patio or deck. What is allowed in the front yard up to 10 feet is unenclosed porch, which is more of a porch that has a roof over it. You see a typically older homes, a typical front porch. And a paved terrace allowed not to exceed 10 feet in the front yard. Everything else, the patios, decks, uncovered porch, which this is, they're allowed on the side, and rear yards up to a certain setback from the lot lines, but not allowed in the front yard, so they're, she's requested a variance to that, and also to reduce the front yard setback, which is 25 feet in the single-family residential two district, which the site is, to 15 feet. So setback of 10 feet into the front yard. As the applicant noted, the drawing is to scale, it doesn't take as much up as indicated here, it was drawn incorrectly in terms of the 20 feet, and I took it and added the 20-foot in the black-marked area that was in your packet, so that shows the actual scale of it, so it doesn't take up front of the house as much as it actually is going to be. So looking at this with the site, it's a corner lot, both the front yards on Joanne Lane and Regal are considered the front yards. It's Zone SFR 2, which again is front yard setback of 25 feet, provided the view from Regal Drive and from Joanne Lane, and your staff report there kind of showing the two sides of it. There's really, with a corner lot, it's really limited rear yard to really build a deck or porch in the back. And as the applicant indicated, and they provide pictures of it, there's other unenclosed porches on the front yard in front of the house, two on Regal, two on Joanne, they provided pictures of that. We got, she provided also 10 letters of support from neighbors in the area for the proposal. The other locations, we found billing permits on a couple of those, there was no variances on there, and I think what happened was they interpreted, probably in the past, is it some type of different accessory structure and allowed to go in the front yard like that? None of them exceed going further than 10 feet into the front yard, these other locations, so. The findings of fact for variation are provided. Again, the variance is a final motion or action by the commission, it does not go onto the city council. So I'll just run through these quick. The first one, the criteria, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the condition law by the regulations of that particular district. Again, it's on a corner lot, there's a small rear yard, if you look at the aerial photo and provided, there's really not much area to do that. The reason why it's located in the northwest part of the lot, as the applicant indicated, it fits in with the internal layout of the home in terms of where the kitchen is and the living area, and fits better in that location. Number two, the extraordinary or exceptional conditions of the property requiring the request for the variance were not caused by the applicant. Applicant indicated they bought the lot about 10 years ago, they're not the original owner, it's only .27 acres, so the existing conditions on the property are not caused by the applicant, they're a result of the historical size and layout of the lot and home. Number three, the variance will alleviate a peculiar, exceptional, or undue hardship Number three, the variance will alleviate a peculiar, exceptional, or undue hardship as distinguished from a mere inconvenience or financial hardship. Again, the property is on a corner lot, limited locations for a porch in the backyard. Other homes in the neighborhood, as indicated, have uncovered porches in the front yard, and those have not been detrimental to the neighborhood. Fourth one, the denial of the proposed variance will deprive the applicant of the use of his or her property in a manner equivalent to the use permitted to be made by the owners... owner of property in the immediate area. Again, there's uncovered porches in the front yards and some surrounding homes. Applicant lives on a corner lot. There's limited area to put a porch that would meet the UDO requirements. And the final one, the proposed variance or certain structure that's appropriate to and compatible with the character of the neighborhood. Again, there's other front porches in the neighborhood. The applicant's provided 10 letters of support with their initial application from neighbors supporting it. In addition, we also received a citizen response form from 225 Joanne Lane indicating their support of this request. I have a sample motion there that recommends approval. The only condition that the survey exhibit be revised to show it accurately in terms of the dimensions of that before they get a building permit. But that does have to be built in substantial conformance to this survey Exhibit A. Again, the... this is... the commission does have the final say on the variance, and it's not a recommendation to council, so. If there's any questions, I'll certainly be happy to answer those.
Okay, thank you. So I now open to the public for anyone that may have any questions or comments. And I'll give a second chance, as we do have people here. And there being none, I close the public hearing portion and open any questions or comments to the commissioners, and I'll start with Katerina.
Yeah, I don't have major questions. Just when this Exhibit A, when that is reformed, that... reformatted or turned in again, maybe it could be indicated where the door and the windows are, because then it's easier to kind of visualize where the porch is and the windows and the front door, whatever.
The new front door.
The new front. But there is a door already there, right?
There is now.
Yeah. So that would stay?
There was a door in the garage.
Ah.
There was a... there was a door into the garage.
Mm-hmm.
There was no door into the house.
But you now have one that gets you into your kitchen?
Hang on, just a second.
Oh, sorry.
I do need to have you go to the podium so we can have it. Thanks.
Sorry.
There's a two-car garage and a door into the garage, like a man door at the side of the garage. And then you have the kitchen, and then you have the living room. And the new door repla... there was a big plate glass window in the living room that has been removed. So the door is basically almost right under the peak of the roof.
Mm-hmm.
Right in the corner of the living room. And then there's two up and down windows right next to it.
So the pictures... the pictures in our backup must be before your door was in... okay.
Okay, then that's what's confusing to me when I looked at that.
I actually... I actually have newer pictures on my phone, but...
We'll make sure the... if you want to pick apart your motion, that the door, new door, is shown on the revised exhibit.
And maybe the existing windows, too.
Yeah, we could have the windows shown on there, too.
Then... so then you can kind of place it in the right place. That's why... I mean, it said in there that it's not to scale, but still it was hard to figure out how it's going to look.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Good point.
I'm done. I'm done, sorry.
I used Menards Design a Deck software.
Just a couple of questions. None pretty minor, I think, but on this product sheet from Menards, it's showing what appears to be a very tall privacy fence?
No, that's the wall of the house.
That's the wall of the house. Oh, okay.
That's why I wanted the windows.
That's why. Okay. And the frontage, the setback on the Joanne side, that is correct?
Yes.
Yes, that is to scale. Yes, that is correct.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
So in that picture of the wall of the house, the door is just at the... right at the edge of the deck, like one foot into the deck. So you go up the stairs, you walk one step in, and there's the door.
Okay, so over here at the right, then?
Is the two windows to the right of the door.
No, that's the backyard.
No, this isn't the backyard. This is what she's talking about.
Yeah. So I think... I think what's confusing, because it confused me too for a minute, our plat is showing it going one way, and the picture of the decking is showing it going the other way.
The picture is... the picture you're looking at the end of the house.
Right. So the decking picture is from... if you were looking from the street.
From Regal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
And that was confusing to me, too. And then the other picture is from...
The other way.
Inside the house. If you were looking inside the house, I guess, yeah. That confused me, too, a little bit.
Okay.
So you've never had a do...
No.
You've never had a door at 422?
It's a little confusing to the delivery people.
There's nothing in the house that looked like a door. It was built there?
No, I would have to open the kitchen door, open the garage door, and then stand at the kitchen sink and look out the window and wait for delivery people to come, and then I would have to step outside.
When you go in the house, you go in through the...
Garage. Up until I have this door, I've always had to enter through the garage.
Now, does Joanne Lane have a door?
There is a door at the other side of the garage into a small hall off the kitchen.
Because I see there's stairs that go down on Joanne Lane, right?
There's... yeah, there's some concrete stairs.
Right.
And then there's stairs also into the house, two steps.
All right. It's just funny. The... so the picture we see with the Menards, that big window there becomes the doorway. Is that right? The... from the picture of the... the door goes into the...
That black, solid black line, that's the wall of the house.
Right.
The door is right there. Yeah.
So I'm looking... well, okay. From the picture, you know the picture, the old picture?
Oh, the old picture.
If you're looking at the old picture, the doorway is where the windows are.
It's just right of center, just right of center in the peak.
Okay, yeah. All right. And the deck would end where that garage door is?
No.
Before you get to the garage?
The deck would start at the middle of the peak and go to the right, to the back of the house, up Regal, not towards Joanne in the driveway.
Okay, all right.
There would be about 10 or 15 feet from the edge of the driveway to the deck.
Okay.
That's empty.
All right. Amen.
Back to the backyard, so to speak. So the stairs off that, that kind of goes around...
Would go down to the backside of the house, right? The... when I first purchased the house, there was a retaining wall that ran... because I'm at the bottom of the hill, and there was a retaining wall that ran all the way down the side of the house, which is 50, 60 feet. And it was tied into the foundation of the house, and it actually pushed, cracked the foundation and pushed the foundation. And I had engineers come and look at the house, and the house was perfectly square and solid on the existing foundation, though there was only about two or three inches of overlap at that point. So I ripped out the retaining wall, and we got permits for that at the time. But once the wall was out, there was a lot of erosion of that hill. And I was concerned that my neighbor's garage was gonna fall into my living room. So we terraced that hill. And there's eight terraces, and they're 60 feet long and two feet... each terrace step is one foot up and two feet back to hold the hill. And that's all flowers. So that's why the other stairs go down the side, so you can walk and have access to all the flowers to do the weeding and cut... get the cut flowers to bring in the house and stuff like that.
These are your flowers? These are your flowers?
Yes.
Very good. So what I hear from my fellow commissioners, and starting with Commissioner Barbie, is that there is... I mean, it sounds like we wouldn't oppose this. I may be misreading. But there... it would be really convenient if we have clarification on the drawings, a little bit more clarification on the drawings. I mean, this is something that we can go on and on and clarify, you know, in the next two hours. But if I were in your position, I would absolutely not spend a penny until I get all the approvals necessary, because the last thing one would want is to, you know, have a nice deck there that somehow the city doesn't like, for whatever reason. So I strongly... I am... I'm gonna respond for one second to Mr. Olson's interjection a moment ago, and I wonder how can the sample variation be amended such that we clarify as much as possible? I think everybody would benefit from, again, having as much clarity as possible before a single nail is hammered in.
I think you could add to the motion that what I indicated in the sample was that the survey showing the correct location dimensions of the uncovered porch, what Commissioner Barbie indicated, or show the locations of the window and doors, or door and windows in there, too, could be just added to the motion. So those are shown accurately on the drawing, in addition to the correct scale, the size of it, porch itself. So that could be added to the motion. And we'll make sure that's done prior to the issuance of the permit.
And so I go back to fellow commissioners and ask, I mean, would that be... would that satisfy us in terms of having those details of where doors are located and so on and so forth? Okay.
Would you be able to make a decision tonight if you saw a photographic representation of that side of the house with the door and the windows?
We... I mean, the way I understand it is, we will make a decision. It's just that the same information you probably already have will be eventually presented to city staff.
For the permit.
Yeah, right.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. So I think that is not necessarily an impediment at this point. I think there's a good chance you have everything that will be necessary, a good chance. I haven't seen anything yet, but... Having said that, I... and I would hate to put Mr. Olson or Joellen... sorry, Charlton, it's Charlton, on the spot here, but I want to take one step back and ask you for two minutes of comments on... there is a variation petition here, and there are some regulations in place that are codified in our ordinance. What do we have setbacks in the first place? I mean, just a historical comment on why things are the way they are.
Setbacks in general or particular to this?
Setbacks in general. Why are we having this discussion about this particular property? But it's not about this particular property, but about the general picture, just for an education for us.
Yeah, I think that goes back to, you know, the setbacks to ensure, I mean, that's the standard staple of zoning ordinances, gone back since DeKalb adopted those decades ago, was to ensure that yard, particularly the front yards and certainly the side and rear yards, that there, you know, is a certain amount of open space between the street and the front of the house. Green space, that's the backbone of the zoning ordinance, really, is a bulk standards of setbacks. In this particular situation with this, the standards do... and most other communities' ordinances will allow some encroachment in the front yard of stoops, stairways, front porches, things added on to the house up to a certain point, you know, coming out from the house. That's a pretty standard. Our ordinance has it, particularly where unenclosed porches and paved terraces can go within 10 feet, but these other items in the language, you know, I think interpreted in the past, but the way we looked at it, the patios, uncovered porches, decks are meant, you know... typically, you find them in the rear yard. But they could be added on to the front in a smaller area to meet that, so. And looking at this, the size, you know, and the scale, how far out from the house they were going pretty much matched what was done in a few other locations in the neighborhood. And the scale of the drawing, you know, was off a little, so it's actually smaller than it appears, and didn't take up that much of the front yard. We have front yard requirements, too, of how much you can take up yard, and they didn't exceed that. So that's a background on setbacks. I don't know if I answered that, but we kind of saw this as something that was fitting in the neighborhood, it was already done, and didn't really detract from the character of the house, and they were kind of limited on what they could do. And they're not exceeding the setback into the front yard that unenclosed porch could go, so. I don't know if Joelle had anything on to that, or...
I think it's pretty good. You just, you know, it's about expectations. You know, the zoning standards are there, and people make purchases based on what's common in the neighborhood and what you can reasonably expect people to be able to do. So we do take setback variations very seriously, and you want to make sure it meets the standards so that it's not causing visual barriers and doing other things that, you know, somebody might object to, given that they're doing something beyond that standard or beyond that expectation. I think, as Dan indicated, we really wanted to look at it as to why... why can you do some things in terms of the allowable encroachments and not others? And as Dan also mentioned, it's quite possible in the past that some staff members may have allowed some of the decks that are there as, you know, an unenclosed por... or, you know, they defined it differently, because we did find some, and we couldn't find any evidence that exceptions were granted or, you know, permits were issued. So in this particular case, we just evaluated it based on its own merits against the standards to make sure it's not gonna be imposing.
And some of our... we talked today, actually, that, you know, having a front porch or deck in, you know, in front of your house is a good thing, you know? Instead of everything behind the building in older neighborhoods, you get a lot of front porches, and want to encourage people to be more out in front of their house at times, too, and people walking on the sidewalk, and it's more pedestrian-friendly type of atmosphere. And a few of them in the neighborhood do have, you know, some small amount of chairs and tables on the front part where they can sit down, and so we're encouraging that, too, and as long as it doesn't take up too much of the front yard, so.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Well, and I think the unfortunate piece is, as she stated, that her front is actually what I would... and I'm sure fellow commissioners may agree, is what I would consider the side of the house. And, you know, so that kind of puts her in an odd situation as well. I do have a question, though, Dan. So in the picture, it looks like the house is on an angle a little bit to the sidewalk. Does that pose any issues? Or am I just not... it's just the way the picture maybe is taken?
Probably the picture from Regal or from...
Yeah.
Probably the picture. I mean, if you look at the survey, I guess the... it is off a little.
Yeah.
I mean, it's 25.5 feet at one corner, 27.8 feet, so.
Right, okay, so I was not...
Couple feet, maybe, off angle.
Doesn't seem to be concerned about.
No.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'll take a motion.
And if, regarding the doors and windows, if... just to take a quick note, if you want to put after second line, 20 by 10 uncovered porch, including doors and windows, add that in at that spot. Would cover what you wanted to see, is from what I heard from the discussion, so.
Could you repeat that again?
Yeah, just including doors and windows after uncovered porch in the second line.
All right.
If that makes sense.
I'll make a motion. All right, based on the submitted petition and testimony presented, I moved that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve a variance to Article 7.03 of the Unified Development Ordinance to allow for an uncovered porch in front... in the front yard, and a variance to Article 5.02.04 to reduce the front yard setback from 25 feet to 15 feet for the property located at 422 Regal Drive, subject to the following. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, a survey showing the correct location and dimension of the proposed 20-feet-by-10-foot uncovered porch, doors, and windows shall be submitted and shall be in substantial compliance with the drawing indicated on the attached Exhibit A.
So we have a motion by Wright?
I'll second.
Second by Neer. Roll call?
When you go in the house, you go in through the?
Garage. Up until I have this door, I've always had to enter through the garage.
Now, does Joanne Lane have a door?
There is a door at the other side of the garage into a small hall off the kitchen.
Because I see there's stairs that go down on Joanne Lane, right?
There's, yeah, there's some concrete stairs.
Right.
And then there's stairs also into the house, two, two steps.
All right. It's just funny. The, so the picture we see with the Menards, that, that big window there becomes the doorway. Is that right? The, the, from the picture of the, the door goes into the?
That black, solid black line, that's the wall of the house.
Right.
The door is right there. Yeah.
So I'm looking, well, okay. From the picture, you know the picture, the old picture?
Oh, the old picture.
If you're looking at the old picture, the doorway is where the windows are.
It's just right of center. Just right of center in the peak.
Okay, yeah. All right. And the, the deck would end where that garage door is?
No.
Before you get to the garage?
The deck would start at the middle of the peak and, and go to the right, to the back of the house, up Regal, not towards Joanne and the driveway.
Okay, all right.
There would be about 10 or 15 feet from the edge of the driveway to the deck.
Okay.
That's empty.
All right. Amen.
Back to the backyard, so to speak. So the, the stairs off that, that kind of goes around?
Would go, would go down to the backside of the house, right? The, when I first purchased the house, there was a retaining wall that ran, because I'm at the bottom of the hill, and there was a retaining wall that ran all the way down the side of the house, which is 50, 60 feet. And it was tied into the foundation of the house, and it actually pushed, cracked the foundation and pushed the foundation. And I had engineers come and look at the house, and the house was perfectly square and solid on the existing foundation, though there was only about two or three inches of overlap at that point. So I ripped out the retaining wall, and we got permits for that at the time. But once the wall was out, there was a lot of erosion of that hill, and I was concerned that my neighbor's garage was going to fall into my living room. So we terraced that hill. And there's eight terraces, and they're 60 feet long and two feet, each terrace step is one foot up and two feet back to hold the hill. And that's all flowers. So that's why the other stairs go down the side, so you can walk and have access to all the flowers to do the weeding and, and cut, get the cut flowers to bring in the house and stuff like that.
These are your flowers?
Hmm?
These are your flowers?
Yes.
Very good. So what I, what I hear from my fellow commissioners, and starting with Commissioner Barbie, is that, that there is, I mean, it sounds like we wouldn't oppose this, I may be misreading, but there, it would be really convenient if we have clarification on the drawings, a little bit more clarification on the drawings. I mean, this is something that we can go on and on and clarify, you know, in the next two hours. But if I were in your position, I would absolutely not spend a penny until I get all the approvals necessary, because the last thing one would want is to, you know, have a nice deck there that somehow the city doesn't like, for whatever reason. So I strongly, I, I am, I'm going to respond for one second to Mr. Olson's interjection a moment ago, and I wonder, how can the sample variation be amended such that we clarify as much as possible? I think everybody would benefit from, again, having as much clarity as possible before a single nail is hammered in.
I think you could add to the motion that what I indicated in the sample was that the survey showing the correct location, dimensions of the uncovered porch, what Commissioner Barbie indicated, or to show the locations of the window and doors, or door and windows in there, too, could be just added to the motion. So those are shown accurately on the drawing, in addition to the correct scale, the size of it, porch itself. So that could be added to the motion, and we'll make sure that's done prior to the issuance of the permit.
And so I, I go back to fellow commissioners and ask, I mean, would that be, would that satisfy us in terms of having those details of where doors are located and so on and so forth? Okay.
Would you be able to make a decision tonight if you saw a photographic representation of that side of the house with the door and the windows?
We, I mean, the way I understand it is, we will make a decision. It's, it's just that the same information you probably already have will be eventually presented to city staff.
For the permit?
Yeah, right.
Correct. Correct. So I think, I think that is not necessarily an impediment at this point. I think there's a good chance you have everything that will be necessary. A good chance, I haven't seen anything yet, but. Having said that, I, I, and I, I would hate to put Mr. Olson or Joellen, sorry, Charlton,[1773.12]